We'll go ahead and call tonight's regular city council meeting to order. And for tonight's invocation, I've asked Alderman Heberlin to please do the honors.
Thank you, sir.
Father God, we truly thank you for your presence with us this evening. And we thank you for the opportunity that we had last weekend for the celebration of the resurrection of our Savior, Jesus Christ. As we go forward with the city's business tonight, we pray that you be with us, keep us in good spirits, and provide us the wisdom that we're going to need to make some of these decisions. And we ask, Father, that as the city's activities start up again tomorrow morning, that you be with our employees. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Can you show me the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Larry Bud.
Here.
Sean Bertle.
Here.
Bernie Dorcheness.
Here.
Rob Heberlin.
Here.
Bruce Jones.
Ray Coontz.
Here.
Mark Voda.
Here.
Earl Walters.
Here.
Seven aldermen present, one absent. First thing we have is a motion to utilize the omnibus vote for approval of the minutes in the previous meetings listed on tonight's agenda under the title Omnibus Vote Designation. Alderman Dorcheness, second by Alderman Bertle, discussion or comment? Roll call, please.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Bernie Dorcheness.
Yes.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Mark Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, the minutes we'll be approving will be the minutes of the regular meeting held April 7th, 2004, minutes of the Lake Airport Committee meeting held April 10th, 2014, minutes of the Water Environmental Committee meeting held April 10th, 2014, minutes of the Finance Committee meeting held April 15th, 2014, and minutes of the Ordinance Committee meeting held April 15th, 2014. I entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Alderman Bertle, second by Alderman Heberlin, discussion or comment? Roll call, please.
Bernie Dorcheness.
Yes.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Mark Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, this, I may ask the city attorney to help me, the motion is consideration of action on a resolution retaining First Midstate as underwriter and Chapman and Cutler as bond counsel and disclosure counsel to the underwriter for a potential project. Rocky's been talking with these folks today, and you want to update us a little bit?
Yeah, if I can, in my review of your Finance Committee minutes and the proposed resolution that is on the agenda this evening, I noticed that it looked like the intention, as well it should be, of the Finance Committee was that the city was going to hire the bond counsel, Chapman and Cutler, and then also hire the Midstate folks to do the actual distribution and sale of the bonds. But when you got the agreement attached to your resolution this evening, you will read in there on the first page that Chapman and Cutler, according to First Midstate, was going to be bond counsel and disclosure counsel to First Midstate and was not going to be your attorney. And I think that's just backwards. And so I had a discussion with David Pistorius today. He checked with Chapman and Cutler. They're willing to delete that paragraph so that we actually are hiring Chapman and Cutler. Just a few minutes ago, I got a very long engagement letter from Chapman and Cutler that I gave to the mayor where they're acknowledging that we will be their client and not the First Midstate. Then I put another call back into Mr. Pistorius because in the document he asked you to sign, apparently you worked out some kind of a deal that if the principal amount of the bond is less than 200 grand, that the city will pay the fees for Chapman and Cutler. If it's over 200,000, First Midstate was going to pick up the tab. So I've got to call into him to verify that with that engagement letter. So with that, I would ask that you table this resolution until the next meeting we'll get everything in order so that you can sign it as if, I think that's what you really intended, was to have Chapman and Cutler be your lawyer.
Any initial questions before I ask for a motion to table?
And we checked with the fire chief back here, and he's okay with that timing-wise.
Alderman Heberlin.
My only question, it was one of the questions that I had under those general provisions and $200,000. Since it is going to be more than that, I was curious on why the first statement was put in there if it was less than that.
I can't answer that question. It's a good question, but I'd assume he would have covered that in your Finance Committee?
We didn't have this.
Okay. This just came out of the blue, then?
Well, I think the previous agreement we had, it was probably in that one.
So this is just boilerplate?
I think that's possible.
Well, actually, the previous agreement, I had Pam check, and it did not have that paragraph that were being deleted the last time you did that. So that kind of raised some eyebrows, too.
Okay.
Okay, everybody else?
Entertain a motion to table. Oh, wait, Pam?
Well, they've already scheduled a public hearing for May 5th. So I mean, I've sent it to the paper, and it's supposed to be in the next couple of days. But I mean, so I guess I need to know, do we cancel that?
Well, we've already paid it. Well, what we can do, if you want, is just kind of tweak this resolution somewhat to be, have the mayor to have the authority to sign in whatever form he approves. And at that point, we'll make sure, if they're not going to go along with what we think they should, then you just come back and we don't sign it, and we cancel the public hearing.
Good with that. Alderman Walters.
Our city attorney took the words right out of my mouth. That was what I was going to suggest. Why can't we just go ahead and subject to the changes that you worked out and authorize the mayor to go ahead and sign it with his document? We can move forward.
Okay, so let's, if you'll take a look at that resolution in front of you, if that's the feeling of the entire council, then under Section 1, where it says afterwards, "as bond counsel," we'll just say, "in such form as may be hereafter approved by the mayor."
What were you out here on G?
On Section 1 of the resolution, Sean.
Oh, resolution.
You'll be crossing out, "in the forms attached here, too," or "in such other forms." And in its place, you'll put, "in such form," "in such form," excuse me, "as may be hereafter approved by the mayor." And then Section 2, second line, you change the plural of the agreement to "agreement," take off the S, and then right before the word Chapman and Cutler, LLP, insert the engagement letter with. And then after incident thereto, "as the mayor may approve." And I think we can go forward.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the amended resolution. Alderman Bertle, second by Alderman Heberlin, discussion or comment?
Well, yes, one comment, please.
Alderman Walters.
Your honor, eliminating the general provisions, that's 3A to 200,000.
Actually, what, I think the final form, G, on the first page of the agreement, Mr. Pistorius is already informing orally that we can cross that out.
G, cross that out.
G.
Okay.
What I haven't heard back from him on is on the second page, under Roman numeral 3A, this 200,000, or what? Under 200,000, we pay; over 200,000, they pay. I don't know what the magic of that was, but that was what they had.
Well, Your Honor, I would agree with Alderman Heberlin. It seems like it's an issue, and we know it's going to be more than $200,000, so.
Okay. I'll ask that that sentence be eliminated, then. But I mean, if you know it's going to be over 200,000, it's kind of a moot issue anyway. So rather than making a lot of phone calls back and forth, might as well just leave it, if you guys are okay with that.
Yeah. It's going to be one of them.
All right. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Mark Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Bernie Dorcheness.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, next we have a motion to change the Ordinance and Finance Committee meetings from Thursday, May 15th, to Tuesday, May 13th, 2014. Entertained? Alderman Bud, can I get a second?
Aye.
Alderman Voda, discussion or comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. City Attorney updates.
Let me bring you up to date on the contract that you've essentially awarded for the, those pillars with La Grange Monument Works. Ran into a little snag on that. Pam sent me some email communications from the company. As you know, your form contract, as well it should, requires that the contractor provide workers' compensation coverage for its employees under Illinois law. And they're objecting to that somewhat. They're in Indiana, and they have Indiana workers' compensation, and they've indicated that they have, it applies to adjacent states, and didn't know why they had to have it. Well, I've checked with the Illinois Department of Insurance today. I've checked with the Workers' Compensation Commission, and the rule is, in Illinois, whether you're an Indiana corporation or not, if you have employees in Illinois, you must have Illinois workers' compensation coverage under its rules. And that's what Pam's been doing some emails back and forth to try to make sure that they comply with that. As I told Pam today, if their Indiana policy covers Illinois, according to Illinois rules, then that's fine. But without it, we have to make them toe the line and give you that workers' compensation, or you're going to be in violation of state law. So Pam is still working on that, I think, at this point. So that contract has not been signed yet, as I understand it.
I don't interrupt you, but can I have a quick question about that particular item?
Sure.
If they've put in a bid on these cannon bases, so if this requires them to purchase something now that they didn't know they had to have initially when they built, when they bid the project, is we're going to be able to come back and let them make an adjustment to the bid price, or how are we going to handle that?
I wasn't involved in the bidding process, Sean, but I would suspect that probably the city gave them the insurance requirements when the bids were solicited, so they knew upfront what it was. And that's, you know, I think that they have to, the way your notice of award reads, I believe, if they don't provide those certificates within, what, 10 days, then you keep the bid amount they bid, the cash bid amount or bid bond, and go elsewhere, if you wish.
So still in question whether their Indiana coverage may cover Illinois?
As of late this afternoon, I don't think we have an answer yet, do we? So we don't know that. The other thing they had, too, they didn't have the city as a designated insurer on the policy of the liability, only as a certificate holder. I think Pam's getting that corrected, too. So I mean, we're, just to let you know, that contract's not completed yet. So if they tell us no, that they don't want to do it. Apparently, the email that came back was, for whatever reason, they said, "Well, Indiana has a $1 million cap on work comp, and Illinois has 10 million." Well, that's not true. I verified that with the Department of Insurance, and work comp, there is no cap on Illinois work comp. It is what it is. If someone gets hurt, there are certain caps on injuries and so many weeks you can collect for loss of use of a man as a whole, they call it. But the workers' comp is based upon the number of employees that you have in the payroll. So I don't know where they got that idea, but that's what Pam got an email today. So we're trying to work through that, I'll let you know. The other thing is we're working on a FOIA request that the Attorney General has made to the Police Department. We're trying to sort through that. Some gentleman that's now in the Department of Corrections has apparently extra time on his hands, so he's making some requests, and it's been denied. Attorney General has further inquiries, so we're working through that. With that, I think that's it.
Any other questions for the city attorney? Alderman Coontz.
Did you receive the note I had about the burnout property on East Vine Concerned and the owners?
Did you send that to me last week?
I gave it to the mayor. I highlighted copy about, well, basically, 414 A says in the ordinance that with the mayor can write a letter of approval that if a, basically, a building or whatever is in immediate danger to public safety, that we can go ahead and do what we got to do.
That was in the nuisance ordinance, right?
Nuisance ordinance, yes. As long as he wrote a letter of authorization. It says, in the ordinance, it says immediately, and you didn't have to go through the so-called day process. The Spurs don't have it in front of me, but I can get with you on that.
Well, let me tell you, I have not seen that memo that you wrote. And I mean, last week, I was tied up all week in F and M in a jury trial, but, so don't blame the mayor, because I just didn't get it. But I'll be happy to look at it. But even though an ordinance may say that your leader can write a letter and say, "Tear it down," we're not going to be able to do that.
So where do we go from here? Because that building is going to potentially fall on somebody.
Well, the same thing you do, you have to make choices with any other piece of property here in town that's dilapidated and subject to condemnation. You have to make that decision, is do we sit back and take it to court and get a court order to board it up? Or do we sit back and try to buy it for lack of taxes, like we did with the one property, which is the cheapest way to do it and the fastest way? Because it's very expensive for this city to throw dollars to get, to take a piece of property down, because you've got to go through this condemnation process. It's a long process. There's a lot of cost and fees with that. So we talked about that, I think, at one time at the ordinance level. But you have a lot of properties, or actually, you have properties in town, George, just let me know that, that you have to do some action with. It's just a question, how much you want to throw money at it to get rid of it.
Alderman Walters.
To help with the particular issue, if we would try to board this particular property up in the east end of town with plywood, it would knock the rest of the building down. That's how bad it is. So we're not, we can't board it up.
Okay.
The property needs to be bulldozed in. It's a public nuisance. It's a hazard. It's an attractive nuisance to kids. Schools are going to be getting out. And it's been burnt two or three times. It's falling in upon itself. We need some immediate action on this.
Is this the one we don't know who the owners are, or we do?
Right.
Just the one with the 11 different years?
I don't know where they're at.
At the same one we, okay, yeah.
Does it make any difference if you have a structural engineer, say, a building is unsafe? Does that?
You have to have that to go into condemnation.
Okay.
You have to have, your engineer has to give a report. Your fire chief has got to give a report saying it's a fire hazard, and then George gets a report of all the violations of the zoning code, engineer says all this stuff. And that's the kind of evidence you give to the judge, to give you an order to go tear it down. But the key here is to find out, you got to serve the people. Before I can tear your house down, I got to let you know I'm going after you. So if I can't find you, then what do you do? Well, at this one, I think Georgia's got one person out of the 11, if I recall. So maybe we do what we call a publication, an interim publication, put a notice in the paper saying, whoever your owners are, we're going to ask to be tore down. And you waited, you published that so many times, and you won't be able to get any personal judgment against them to recoup your cost, what they call interim, but it should give you the right to be able to go in and tear it down. But again, you're going through that legal process. If that's what you want to do, we can do it. But just to say a letter and have the mayor say, "Okay, then I'll go over there and do that."
That won't work, huh?
Don't ask me that question. If it gets done, it gets done.
More follow-up, please.
City Attorney, the mayor. I would ask that we follow up on that and get that process started, where committee you want that to go through, if you would.
All right, we can put it, I guess, on Ordinance Committee. I mean, I don't know where else we could go, the ordinance of finance.
The address of this property?
It's on Vine Street, but I don't have the exact address. East Vine.
I can't tell you the exact address.
You'll recognize it.
Right on Long Street.
All right, let's move on to mayor updates. Got a couple of things going on now that the spring has finally made it here, and one of them involves an annual recycling event. United Way of Christian County is going to hold one this weekend, actually, April 26th, from 8:00 a.m. till noon at the Christian County Fairgrounds. And they'll take computers, laptops, monitors, keyboards, all kinds of equipment like that. On Saturday, May 17th, next month, from 8:00 to 3:00, Christian County Solid Waste Management Department and the Illinois EPA will hold a household hazardous waste collection event there at the fairgrounds. And, you know, that's where you can get rid of the paint, insecticides, used motor oil, antifreeze, batteries, et cetera. So these are two excellent opportunities to start cleaning out that garage and getting some of that stuff out of here. So I hope everyone takes advantage of that when time comes. And we've briefly talked about taking the houses down. I want to thank Dick Wiseman and whoever else helped him, you know, get the house down there on East Franklin Street. It's been torn down and removed now, and so I want to thank them for what they've done. With that said, I do want to remind everyone, as Rocky said, you know, these eyesores, we get rid of them, but you get rid of them at a cost to the city and thereby the taxpayers. These things are expensive to get rid of. We're talking about thousands of dollars to get rid of one of these things. So every time we do that, I mean, we celebrate because it looks better, but we've also spent a good sum of money to get that done. So we have to keep that in mind as well. Also, I want to thank Dick and his crew and the Lake Department guys. Last week, for about two days, they went to Old Walnut Hill Cemetery. It's located a few miles kind of southwest of Sharpsburg there. And that's a place where the first settlers here in Christian County, many of them are buried. And over the years, it just, you know, fell into ruin. Trees up there, it's completely covered. The stones are knocked over and some of them buried and everything else. But with it being the 175th, we wanted to make one more attempt to clean that up. I'm going to have the Historical Society and the Genealogical folks come out there and try and do readings of the ones we can uncover and map them out again and, you know, try and set that straight once again. Again, that's the first settler that came to Christian County, is directly buried out there, Martin Hannan, came out in 1818. And so we'd like to find his grave, if possible, and maybe even talk about a new marker for that. So, but again, we took advantage of it now. The property owner's willing to let us in there and let us do our work, and we got in there before the poison ivy and everything else starts growing up there. So I want to thank Dick for their efforts. This Friday coming up is Arbor Day here in the city of Taylorville, and I usually read a proclamation. I don't want to read that same proclamation because it's the same one every year, but I do proclaim Friday as Arbor Day here in the city of Taylorville. That's about all I got unless someone wants to comment on anything else. Larry, you want to speak about Alstom, or are you good with it for now, or?
Well, again, the other day, I had a talk with Mr. Haiti and Mr. Olive, and it appears that in the middle of July, they're going to tear that stack down, make some repairs to the equipment. Be down, what did he say, 48, 30 to 45 days? And it should improve that considerably over there. So at this time, I mean, at least we've got some kind of a target when we'll get some relief in that neighborhood. Fortunately, this weekend, I didn't hear it at all. So it looks like we're going to get some relief. And I appreciate what they've done.
Mr. Haiti, you want me to point out that in that third to four days you're talking about, that's probably the outside, and the fact that they might not have the machine running at that period of time. That's what, 34 days. He got back, and several of his employees were worried that they were going to be laid off for that period of time. So he wanted to make sure that his employees understood, "No, we're not closing the factory down for that period of time."
Just that, that production.
Working on that project. Any other questions or comments?
If I might.
Alderman Heberlin.
Yeah, I, and I spoke last meeting about, I think that we need to do a sound study down there. And Alderman Bud tabled that at the Finance Committee meeting, but I still believe that we could use this time wisely in at least doing some research and getting some information together to where if we need to do a sound study in the future, we're ready to go. It sounds like he's already hedging. So, you know, I don't know, come fall, if the fix is going to be in, but if you wait until the fall to start getting information together and do a sound study, it's going to be Thanksgiving before you get anything done. And I just think it'd be wise use of time to get something started now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments? Let's move on to committee reports. Discussions and/or motions to approve, adopt, and/or deny, and/or table, and/or amend, and refer to an appropriate committee in whole or in part the matters regarding the following subject matters discussed at the committee level. And we start out with Lake Airport Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. We had several motions come out of the recent Lake and Airport Committee meeting, the first of which was a motion to allow the Kiwanis Club to construct a 24-by-12-foot small pavilion on lake property at no cost to the city, coordinating that project with Lake Superintendent Jackson. I'd like to place that in the form of a motion.
You have a second on that?
Second, Your Honor.
Alderman Walters, discussion or comment? Roll call, please.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Mark Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Bernie Dorcheness.
Yes.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Second motion, Your Honor, was a motion to hold the 5th Annual SB Edwards Youth Fishing Tournament at Kiwanis Park on May 17th, 2014, from 10:00 a.m. in the morning to 2:00 p.m. that afternoon. I'd like to place that in the form of a motion.
Second, Your Honor. Alderman Walters, go ahead with your comment.
I would like to really encourage all of my fellow aldermen to come out there and help us on that duty. I enjoy doing it along with Superintendent Jackson, but we could use some additional help, not for just an hour or so, but for the entire time that we're out there. Thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
The next motion was to allow the Bingham family members to make repairs to the gazebo at Lake Marina at no cost to the city. That, too, I would like to place in form of a motion.
Okay, you have a second on that?
Second.
Alderman Heberlin, discussion or comment? Hearing done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
Motion to the City Council to accept the low quote of $2,657.75 from Lowe's paving and seal coating to seal coat, crack fill, and stripe the airport far-southing, far-south parking lot, which is near the parachute club, with funds to be utilized from the fiscal year 2014-2015 budget. Place that in form of a motion, Your Honor.
Okay, good second on that.
Second.
Heberlin, discussion or comment? Roll call, please.
Mark Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Bernie Dorcheness.
Yes.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
The next motion was to accept the low quote of $2,494.80 from Lowe's paving and seal coating to fill cracks in the airport east-west runway with the funds to be utilized from the fiscal year 2014-2015 budget. Place that in form of a motion.
Okay, good second on that.
Second.
Heberlin, discussion or comment? Roll call.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Bernie Dorcheness.
Yes.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Alvin Dortchiness, second by Alvin Walters. Additional? Alvin Bud?
As I brought up at that, at the water meeting that night, that this is based on a six-million-gallon plant. If EPA comes in and says, we only need a four-and-a-half or five-gallon, these rates need to be reviewed after we get the permit from EPA. I stated it that night, and I still, I still feel that way.
Alvin Heberlin?
And it's my understanding from the meeting the other night that these rates will be reviewed on a yearly basis.
I have to state that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Alvin Dortchiness?
Well, I'd like to give Superintendent Spiegel a pat on the back, Jamie Headen also from Business Associates, Mayor for his help, Jackie Nation for her input. There's a lot of, a lot of work went into coming up with this, a lot of discussions with Alstom, and I'd just like to give those people a pat on the back for the job well done.
You trying to thank us, or just pass the blame around? Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Rob Heberlin?
Yes.
Ray Coons?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burtle?
Yes.
Bernie Dortchiness?
Yes.
Rob Heberlin?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Brings us to Water and Environmental Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. That first motion, I would like it to read as follows, simply because of the fact that in that motion, on the City Council agenda, it doesn't include the rates. The water rates are in the minutes, but I would like them to appear in both places so that in the future, if somebody wants to look at this, and they look at this, they don't have to look at the agenda, or the minutes from tonight's meeting, and then go back and look at the, the minutes from the committee meeting. I'd like them to appear in both places. So I'd like the motion to read as follows, the motion to implement steps one to four of the water rate, water rate increases in the process to build a new water treatment plant, with each step being as follows, and then to enter this data that's in the minutes of the Water Committee meeting into the minutes of the City Council meeting tonight. So I'd like to make that in form of a motion.
City Attorney?
I have a comment. I think because, I believe your code, section eight dash four dash nine, is where all your water rates are at, this is probably gonna, it will necessitate an ordinance to incorporate these rates for this time. So with your motion, if you could direct me to do that, we could make the rate, rates effective as of May 1, even though you're gonna be adopting that coming up in the first meeting in May. That way we got it official.
Okay.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Okay. Alvin Dortchiness, second by Alvin Walters. Additional? Alvin Bud?
As I brought up at that, at the water meeting that night, that this is based on a six-million-gallon plant. If EPA comes in and says, we only need a four-and-a-half or five-gallon, these rates need to be reviewed after we get the permit from EPA. I stated it that night, and I still, I still feel that way.
Alvin Heberlin?
And it's my understanding from the meeting the other night that these rates will be reviewed on a yearly basis.
I have to.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alvin Dortchiness?
Well, I'd like to give Superintendent Spiegel a pat on the back, Jamie Headen also from Business Associates, Mayor for his help, Jackie Nation for her input. There's a lot of, a lot of work went into coming up with this, a lot of discussions with Alstom, and I'd just like to give those people a pat on the back for the job well done.
You trying to thank us, or just pass the blame around? Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Rob Heberlin?
Yes.
Ray Coons?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burtle?
Yes.
Bernie Dortchiness?
Yes.
Rob Heberlin?
Yes.
Ray Coons?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burtle?
Yes.
Bernie Dortchiness?
Yes.
Rob Heberlin?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next motion was to accept the quote of $1,977.52 from Wrestlers and Associated for Chlorine Switch Over Repair. I'd like to make that in form of a motion.
Second, Alvin Walters, discussion or comment? Roll call.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burtle?
Yes.
Bernie Dortchiness?
Yes.
Rob Heberlin?
Yes.
Ray Coons?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
The next motion was to allow Superintendent Spiegel to purchase metal from O'Neill Metals Company for a cost not to exceed $800 for material for fabrication of a truck bed. I'd like to make that in the form of a motion.
Okay, good second on that?
Second.
Alvin Voda, discussion or comment? Roll call.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burtle?
Yes.
Bernie Dortchiness?
Yes.
Rob Heberlin?
Yes.
Ray Coons?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burtle?
Yes.
Bernie Dortchiness?
Yes.
Rob Heberlin?
Yes.
Ray Coons?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burtle?
Yes.
Bernie Dortchiness?
Yes.
Rob Heberlin?
Yes.
Ray Coons?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Second motion was, motion to contribute $3,000 to the senior citizens of Christian County. Make that in form of a motion.
Second by Alvin Burtle, discussion or comment?
One comment.
Go ahead.
That is for the current fiscal year. They will be back in August or September to get for the next fiscal year, so they will be back in three or four months.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Sean Burtle?
Yes.
Bernie Dortchiness?
Yes.
Rob Heberlin?
Yes.
Ray Coons?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Second motion was, motion to contribute $3,000 to the Optimus Club for the Fourth of July fireworks. Make that in form of a motion, Your Honor.
Second.
Second by Alvin Burtle. The only comment I have to make, now, my understanding is this was the same setup as last year.
That's correct.
$3,000 is the, what we're guaranteeing, in a worst case scenario, it could, could go as high as eight if they can't raise their portion of it.
That's correct.
Okay. Any other comments? Roll call.
Rob Heberlin?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Go back. Bernie Dortchiness?
Yes.
Rob Heberlin?
Yes.
Ray Coons?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?